The, let's see, review and approval of minutes for April 28th. Is there a motion to approve minutes?
So moved.
On 28th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, any corrections, anything like that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 At the start of every planning board meeting, we have a period for public comment. If anybody has any comment on any issues that are not in the public hearing.
Thank you.
Statement?
My name is Eric Stutt.
Okay.
I'm at 28 Cedar Ridge Road, and I'd like to comment on Planning Board Item 2014-02. I've had an opportunity to review a memorandum that David Carser sent out on March 21st regarding this project. Had an opportunity to review it with my engineer, and I'd like to thank the planning board for addressing our concerns about the impact that this project would have, not only on my property, but on my adjacent neighbor's property because of the water flow, silt, and terrain issues. If any members of the planning board would like to come and see firsthand about the ongoing impacts caused by the uncontrolled border coming down from 208, I'd be very happy to host you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We have a request from Shopright to take them off the agenda. They don't have their paperwork in, so we're just going to do that and change the agenda. So Said will be up first. What can you tell us?
I don't know, you've got a new, all the, I don't know, you guys got a chance to look at it, all the?
I haven't really, have you had a chance?
No.
You could just, you want to just sum it up, what the changes were? We don't know where to look.
All the issue that they had, I think you have it, I have the list. The table had to be updated, so just that the frontages of the two roads listed separately for the, I mean, basically, I give the list to the engineer, because I can answer these questions, but he put everything that was listed, he says he addressed it, if you want to go one by one, but if you look at it, the map that he gave me in two pages.
Which, which date are you looking at?
This one is May 7th.
May 7th, okay.
It's the last, last, I just took all the information that you guys requested, you to the engineer, and there's a bike rack, and what sort of, and also parking lot, about the lighting, parking space, you know.
Did you get rid of the parking to the south to create?
Yeah, we're gonna, he showed.
Or open space, so that's going to be dedicated, open space?
Yes.
Because we're going to hold it to the parking to the north and the east.
Yeah, we're gonna take those three parking lots out and add it to the, the open space.
Great.
So, I guess this.
I think that was LaGusta's.
That was the biggest sort of issue for you guys, that they want to get that, not to exit through Hummer Road to the building, because it's very close, and I thought it was basically people that worked there parked there, but I talked to Stacy, she says you guys feel like rather not have that to the space.
We like to get the open space better.
Yeah, so we added that to the open space.
And the driveway was very close to the corner.
Yeah, yeah.
So then, do we know about how much, because you're like 10% under the open space requirement? I don't know how much that added, just out of curiosity.
He says he added about like 5 or 7%, 5 or 10%, but he calculated included to the space. We still didn't make the requirements.
Yeah.
Even we added that two parking, we still didn't make the, the requirement.
Yeah.
We still need a variance, which we have the application with ZBA tomorrow to show them the, we need this, three more variants beside the use variants that we're going to request.
What are the three variances, then?
The, the open space, parking setback, and the other one is.
Use variance?
Uh, no, sign.
Right.
So these are the three that we're going to add to the.
Just any sign, but we're shooting for a sign that would be appropriate for B1?
Yes, yeah. And maybe already discussed it with Stacy, she give me what is required sort of for B1, we're going to stay on that guideline. So even, and I told that to my engineer, so he has that sign according to B1 regulation.
Okay. So we'll let Dave review the new map?
Okay.
And then you'll be on the zoning board tomorrow?
Tomorrow, right.
Tomorrow night, and I don't think there's anything we can really do here tonight.
Yeah, I understand.
We're just waiting, but thank you for letting us know when the changes should be.
If you can, for next meeting, hopefully, we can proceed to the sending this to the public hearing and the county.
Public hearing and county.
Send that to report to county, because it's really, I'm not complaining, but it's just time consuming every month, because you guys, especially the ZBA, they don't only meet once, once a month, and I have to wait one more month, and it's just like, it just, and I appreciate, you know, you guys very, very helpful, but if you can, in term of sending it to the county and a public hearing, we can, I don't know, somewhere next.
George, can we do that?
Yeah, could we say that?
If it comes back to the zoning board, just send it up if we agree on it now.
Do you know if the zoning board has sent it up? The zoning board itself has to send things.
Yeah, they're gonna send it, they're, we talked, we have everything on order, they're gonna send it up, yeah.
They already made the motion to send it to the county tomorrow.
They haven't done it yet.
Tomorrow.
They haven't done it yet.
We don't have to do it separately.
You do, actually.
You do?
Right, so what I'm suggesting is, if this plan, if one of you would generally consider variable action, we could refer it with an appropriate note that says it depends on the use variance, and the board will take final consideration. At least that way, the planning board will get both applications to look at for next board meeting.
Okay.
And give you, give you a joint response rather than separate.
Yeah, it sounds good.
We disposed to do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've discussed all of our concerns.
I think we've gone over every issue, so.
Yeah.
And you are aware there's a use variance, so it's subject to the ZBA, it's not, this is not something you would usually do, because you'd want to know the ZBA position once, but I think in this case, the two members present at the last meeting that, I think the ZBA is trying to work with that.
Okay. So if we could have a motion to conditionally send this up to the county, subject to the use variance from the zoning board tomorrow.
Well, they won't be taking the action on the use variance tomorrow. They won't be taking action on the use variance tomorrow, they'll be hearing the application of the public hearing, but they'll need to get county comments back as well.
So we'll have to wait a little bit.
But I think what you can do is refer it with the ZBA.
The same time.
When the ZBA sends it up, send yours to them.
I'll make that motion?
Just, just so I'm understanding all this, so the variances we're talking about, like, first of all, there's the use variance, right?
Right.
If you get the use variance, then you're going to pursue the open space variance, right?
Right.
A variance for a sign, similar to what would be.
Right.
Okay, in B1, and then a setback variance.
Right.
So those are the three.
Right.
That you would pursue, provided that you get the use variance.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to understand.
Now, that, the way I understand it, probably, you can send them both together after they approve this, let's say tomorrow, whenever they.
Tomorrow, what I understand is they open a public hearing, they'll refer your application to the county. Kelly, are they considering taking an action tomorrow night?
No, because I think they have to set the public hearing for the use variance.
So you're gonna have a public, so it's not tomorrow? The public hearing is not set for tomorrow night?
No, no. I made the motion to set it to that tomorrow next meeting, so it will be set for.
It will be 10 days. So we may as well just hold off, though.
Well, you would still have an advantage. If this is a plan that will generally look like the plan that will be submitted to you, and there's nothing that you've heard in terms of variance that you might have an issue with, it doesn't hurt to send it to the county now, notwithstanding that you can't approve it, because they'll take one pass through it, they'll give both boards back comments, presumably, the comments will be harmonious and not conflicting, and you will both have comments back in time to take action at your June meetings. You will have to act after the zoning board grants the use variance, chooses to do that, but you'll have all the stuff in hand that you need. I think it has merit, you know, it's really a question of whether there's something about the variances requested that you want to wait and see, or the description and what you've seen in terms of the site plan is sufficient to remove questions, then you can proceed forward.
I don't, I don't think that we, I don't see anything on there that's going to change or likely to change that would affect my sense of it. So we could, we could just make a motion to send it up with the zoning boards.
Yes.
Referral to the, also county.
That's all good.
I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, it's passed unanimous to send it up with the zoning board as a referral to.
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, okay.
Just losing here for conversation.
Okay. We'll send it up with the zoning board, referral to county, it'll possibly take a few days, a week or so off.
Okay.
Good timing.
Okay, that will help. Thank you, thank you, guys. And you're gonna look at it, if there's anything, you're gonna let me know?
Yes, and any other changes that have to be made, so that we can get it out in at least two weeks before the board meeting.
Sure, as long as I know what it is, that if there's an issue, David is very, very good, you know, very fast, yeah.
Did you give him?
No, he has, he has it in a file.
I don't have, Kelly, unless I've got one back there in my folder, I didn't check on the way in, I don't have that latest.
When were you last in, you were in?
Duncan, wait.
No.
Yeah, the new one should be in there.
So you have that.
You want the original, we'll give you the original.
I'd like to have two.
Yeah.
I'll give you. I have a cup of actual coffee. Yep, thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Next on the agenda is LP Builders.
We sent out the form to them for, a request form to them on the 21st, you know, so they don't anticipate getting a referral to the public hearing, however, we did want to submit, you know, to get another technical review, which Dave provided, thank you very much, and I'd like to go through that. You want me to just keep going, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay. Regarding the steep slopes, I don't see any problem addressing what Dave is asking for, however, with one aside there, the 100-foot with an outer foot of the propylene, that's just the point of the planning board, raise that on the north and south sides, which are adjacent to the property, because they're not downhill, we have no effect on those, it'd be kind of intrusive to the surveyor to go on to the, these are both developed properties, aren't the other properties. We do have all the information we need within 100-foot downhill, based upon the nature of this project, I think that's sufficient, and, you know, so we can provide the cross-section and everything else that Dave's asking for, but again, I don't see a need to go 100-foot beyond the propylene lines on the north and south side, so.
So closer the buildings or any structures to the north and south?
The driveway is, you know, within, I'd say 30 feet, the buildings are probably, I mean, I could get to the buildings, I could get very easily.
Just wondering, just an aerial, just to show the relationship.
Okay, I could do that, okay.
So you're talking about the driveway to the south?
The driveway to the south, yeah.
And what about to the north?
To the north is over 100 feet.
To the driveway or to a structure?
To the driveway.
And then the structure is further over?
Actually, the structure on that one is pretty much straight out, so it's about the same.
So Dave, you're thinking, was it the ordinance required the 100 feet, or was your visual inspection such that you thought that it needed something else?
It requires 100 feet.
Okay, but you, do you have any, did you do a visual inspection, and is it something that is unusual going on on adjacent properties?
No, I think, I think this slope is certainly headed to the west.
Yeah.
So it's.
It's not surprising.
The other properties are not going to be affected the same way the property to the west would be.
So, yeah, I could, you know, we could show the buildings per aerial with respect to the 5 line, because we feel the aerial will give us the driveways and everything else, I could do that. I just, again, I hate to have the surveyor go out there, trace all over other people's property, sometimes they get a little, you know, squirrely about it, so. Okay, so we're open with that, then? I don't have to show some peak slope over 100 feet north and south, woman?
All right, north and south.
Okay, okay.
Do we make a motion on that, George?
To wave it? To, is that the only waver that we need for the subdivision?
Yeah, that takes care of what, A and D on the steep slope things, and like I said, everything else, we have no problem taking care of.
Wait, we're looking at Dave's memo from May 5th, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, page 2, at the bottom of the page, he talks about steep slopes, and then the information required, section 140, 138A, A through E. And two of those, the only thing we didn't have was that topography within 100 feet.
Right.
Do you have, Dave, does our ordinance require a percent analysis of what is greater than 15%, less than 15%? I know you indicated that there's 15 to 25% slope on this property.
It's, it's shown here, most of it is moderate, moderately steep, the 15 to 25, anything over 25 would be very steep, and that should be differentiated of the plan.
Okay, next section is the drainage. I did hold off on that, because I know there's, there's been a lot of input from, from the adjoining propylene downhill, Mr. Stutt. I did have our surveyor go out there and follow the course of this swell that goes through our property. It actually does not impact Mr. Stutt's house at all, it's picked up by swill that runs to the adjoining lot to two large culverts underneath the driveway. I do have a surveyed plan that I will be including with the next admission that shows that, but again, that the, the water that goes through this swell does not impact Mr. Stutt's house. It goes to the driveway of, who is that? Loft.
I believe he was in the last meeting with the concern about what was going down in this property.
Yeah, all the water that goes through his property, that's where it goes. So that being said, regarding the swell, you know, I didn't, not address Dave's comments from last time, reducing the velocity in that, and my only question is that, for what storm would you want that velocity reduced to 7 feet per second? Because I was using the actual capacity of the culvert underneath Route 208, you know, that's a flow that may never be realized, again, from, from my information, the road's never been topped, the water's never run over the top of the road. If, you know, the criteria is a 10-year storm, to keep the erosion velocities down in that swell, I will, you know, most likely do an analysis of the drainage area going to that and do it accordingly. You know, if we had a little more flexibility in that, say 10 feet per second, you know, I could probably add some check dams and whatnot, hold it down to that, and just continue with the 25-year storm, which segues into the, the next question, which is, again, I use 25-year storm for the infiltrators, because that's the same storm that the state uses for their, their culvert crossings. You know, if you want me to use a larger storm for the infiltrators, you know, just tell me and I'll talk it over with my client. There are some new things that have come on the market, Art Tank, I don't know if you've seen those, Dave, I've sent you information on them, and they got 95% void ratio, so it might not be too difficult to upsize these things.
What is that, can you explain that?
Well, if you use uniform stone, your void ratio is about 40%, in other words, 60% of is actual rock, 40% of it is air, so when you use that for infiltration trends, you only get credit for the actual air between the stones, which is 40%. These things are, I mean, they're actually stackable, they're low-rated, they're a new thing out on the market, they provide a, a large amount of storage for the stormwater so it could perk into the ground.
Are they square?
They're rectangular, yes. Yeah, they're, yeah, I've already used them on a job at Connecticut and at Warwick, and both my clients are very happy with them.
What is it called?
Art Tank, yeah, it's by ACF Environmental, if you want to look them up, it's one of their, you know, one of their key products, so.
It's PVC, right?
Yeah, yep, yep.
So you bury those in a trench with stone around them?
Yeah, with stone around them, and you wrap them with the geotextiles, so, you know, they don't get zilted up.
How many, how many feet of those do you have?
Well, they're only, I mean, the standard unit's only 15 inches, 15, 15 and 3/4 inches high, so, you know, again, you can stack them in two, three, or four, four, but.
Say that again, the standard unit is?
They're only, they're only about that high.
Oh, okay, that's not what I meant.
Well, they, they combine them for doubles, triples, quadruples, et cetera.
Okay.
And again, they can stack them six high and, and still get low rating out of them the way they're put together. Very interesting product, not that I get anything on the sales. But if you, you know, Dave, you want me to use 100-year storm, and you're okay with Art Tank, if I send you the information on it, you know, then I think I could talk my client to doing that, it would save you money, check.
Correct, but I also have a saying on, on this matter, this came up on the first meeting I was here, and this was brought up, not because you guys investigated or anybody, was brought up by this gentleman here claiming to be true, that the water coming from 208 going through my property has flooded his house. Now we know it's absolutely false, and he's a liar for that.
Really?
Okay, well, just as a point, so what you're saying is that it's not, the water's not going to go to his house, it's going to go to the neighbor?
It doesn't.
Correct.
I don't see how that's any different.
It goes, it goes to culverts underneath the neighbor's driveway.
Well, it's not changed, though.
Correct.
So the house next door is flooded, and they're not coming to meetings, I don't see the difference.
Now, so we're getting off the track here. This is, every time I'm coming here, it's costing me 5, 3, 4, 5,000.
Oh, I know, it's just terrible.
For something which you guys hear, I want you to understand now, all this issue has absolutely zero truth to his property, to his credibility, not because I'm saying it, but it's by the engineer, I had to hire the engineer go there and do a survey, I had to hire an engineer go do, inspect the property, walk to the property. As far as your engineer, I've been, I got a bill from him for $2,000, doing basically what he's supposed to do, but he only would have taken five minutes to walk to the property and clear this issue, which this guy brought up pictures and threatening letter with due respect, you said what you're legal here, not to protect him, but to protect both, to be equal, correct?
It's the function of the board, I can protect them.
Who's the board?
We're the board.
Is the property, is their property?
Is this going anyplace?
Well, we're required to address it.
This is not a dictatorship.
Yeah, okay, get to your point, Lou.
This is you guys, because my property exists, my taxes, because this town exists. I think everybody should be treated equally, respectfully, legally, correct?
We try to, we try to.
If I'm trying, if I'm coming here and lying about it, I want you guys to investigate to find, if I'm lying about it, if I'm lying about it, then I should be called on for it, because his, his lie, and you guys believe in it, it has cost me $15,000 up today, and now we're talking to do a, another expensive major project on this property which has absolutely no effects, and it does not need it, another $10,000 to me. What you, do you guys believe that it's the true, it has to be happening?
Well, first of all, this engineering is the first that's come before the planning board, this is all new to us tonight. Where, where, this, what your engineer has said, where was this, where was this three weeks ago when we were reviewing it? What I would, what I would suggest is that we give Dave a copy of, of yours, let him, let him review it, and then we'll take it back up in another board meeting.
Okay, fair enough, but back to my question, then, as far as design years, Dave, you know, if you give me specific information, then I'll respond.
Many quotes are 50-year storms, and I appreciate you using that.
Okay.
We talked about you would either look at the watershed, or you'd take the maximum flow out of that culvert, and we talked about.
Well, that, that's for the swell, yeah.
The maximum flow would be based on some head there, that it was just overtopping 208.
Right, which is what I did.
So you've got a choice there, you can either do the watershed, figure out what's coming through there, or you've got to take that maximum.
Yeah, well, the maximum is what I use, and that's, you know, that, that's why I got the, you know, 15 feet per second as is, but.
Did you have head on the pipe?
Uh, yeah.
In that calculation?
Yes, it is, yeah. I'll verify that, but I'm pretty sure I did.
Mr. Stutt's property is on the slope from your property.
Correct.
And to say that development on this property is not going to affect him is wrong.
It's absolute true, it doesn't affect him at all.
Absolutely wrong. Soon as you cut a tree on that property, you're going to affect his property.
Lou, this is an argument that's going nowhere.
Yeah, it's not going anywhere.
It's going nowhere.
Dave, let me ask you this.
But I'm paying for it.
No, well, maybe you're going to pay, the more you keep this going, the longer you're going to pay, because the meeting takes longer then, but let me just ask our engineer a question. So Dave, the, what you've asked them to do is in our ordinance, and there's typical requirements on development of a site, correct?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, let me, let me just back off from that. The only deviation from that, and again, this was a concession that we made to Mrs. Stutt, was the nature, the size of this project does not warrant mitigating stormwater.
However, however, you have a very steeply sloped, I mean, 15%, going up to 25%, most communities at over 15% would say very steep, so it is a steep site, it's a constrained site, which is why it hasn't been built on earlier, and probably was an orphan lot because of that. So with that comes, comes issues, you know, and unfortunately, more development issues on a steep slope, there's no doubt about it, and that's what you have. We try to be balanced about who we listen to, we're not the police of the public, so when somebody comes in and says something, they're entitled to say what they want to say, and we listen, same as we'll listen to you, but, you know, but at the end of the day, we try to balance everything and make a decision, based on our ordinance and based on the recommendation of our professionals.
Based on facts.
Well, also, I was. Based on the facts as we know them.
Not words, based on facts.
Based on, well, we, we only know facts based on, we're, we're trying to arbitrate what you say, what a neighbor says, and we have professionals that work for the board, we're all volunteers, we do this for free, and we live in town, we pay taxes as well.
Correct.
So we're trying to balance everything out, but no one's going out to checking, making sure you're not lying, he's not lying, he's not lying, you know, we're all trying to do the best we can, so I think you just have to, you have to kind of take that into consideration.
Dave, we use rainfall 50 year.
I think the, the point here is that we have an. I think the point here is that we have an engineer whose job it is to look at the impacts of the neighboring sites and the area. It's not about one neighbor or another neighbor, it's about the impacts of the site. You know, these are things that, I mean, you had to have known when you bought this parcel that it was, had these challenging situations. Okay, just to skip to the end of the memo, if we could discuss the idea of only allowing one house, which you mentioned in the, in the memo, which, you know...
Well, I think, I was going to get to that.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Before we get to that, again, the archaeological, as I said, that we did send a letter, we're waiting for response. Additional information required. I do have that, I have a letter from Mike Nowicki, he did a site investigation, which Louie paid for, and I will present, I have a copy here if you want it, Dave, I will formally submit it with the next submission, but he pretty much went through every dangerous species that could possibly be there and gave us a pretty clean... Thank you, I'll forget it.
Yeah, I'll just pass it down.
But again, I will submit this formally with our next submission, since I didn't have this available when we submitted this. And then, you know, that brings us to, I mean, the DOT we got, we're not going to apply for the permit until, you know, we know that subdivision is, is going to be a go, because that's the one permit into. And then we get to the end of the letter and that last paragraph, and that is something that we most definitely do need a decision on today, so that Mr. Podge doesn't spend more money necessarily if we're going to get to a point where the planning board says, you know, this subdivision is, you know, not going to fly.
Yeah.
I got more copies if you want.
You have more, yeah.
Yeah.
Comments? I think that...
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Dave.
The, not doing a subdivision is one option. Going, doing a subdivision obviously entails more costs than a normal lot. That's all there is to it, there's engineering costs, there's mitigation costs that you wouldn't encounter if you're building on a lot in a flat area. So I guess I don't have a lot of sympathy about the cost because it's, it's a choice to proceed or not proceed, and you can do that. Would the board want to think about doing a site visit?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
You think that that's something that we should, we should look at?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure that we can give you today, we're not going to allow the subdivision or we're going to allow, I don't think, I don't think we're there.
The question being, if, if we, you know, address Dave's comments to his satisfaction, you know, is the board going to then approve the subdivision or not?
Well, we're not, we're not to that point, we have to have a public hearing, it's a steep slope.
Understood, yeah.
The, we're just not there yet.
Okay.
It's premature.
Let me ask a question of you, Dave, do you believe your comments can be addressed? I'm satisfied?
I think they can be addressed, and I think it's going to take more money to be able to address them. I mean, anytime you're working on a steep slope, that right there is a red flag, there's inspections that's going to go on as this is being built, that's going to really be more money again. There's a lot of factors here that have to be addressed, that this is a tough site.
What's the nature of the soils?
It's up front, I understand, it's fairly good soil, and it's not as good in the rear, and no...
Yeah, right.
Are you replacing some soil back there? I mean, I think at one of the meetings that you talked about doing something with an infiltration trench or something along the property line?
Again, that was to mitigate the additional runoff from our imperviousness, which is what I was starting to say before, it's not a requirement for something this size. We agreed to do that, you know, based upon, I wrote again.
Yeah.
But, no, we're, I mean, other than the infiltration trench, yeah, we've got to excavate to put that in. If we use these new systems that I was talking about, the excavation's actually going to be less even for a larger storm because, again, we get much, much, much more void, higher void ratio. But, you know, that, we're not going to be hauling it offsite, we're not going to be, you know, bringing a whole lot of soil that would pretty much balance with what we're doing with the houses and whatnot, which will show up on the cross-sections, you know, when we do those before the next submission. I don't see a problem addressing all of these qualities before the next submission. You know, and then we go from there, but anything else from the board to, we're here for input?
These infiltration structures, they would go in the swell at the bottom?
They would go, same place that we have the infiltration trenches shot, which are...
Okay, where's the bottom?
The bottom is...
It's the bottom.
Yeah, okay, they're, they're, this is an old sample. It's getting a little busy now, but these are the infiltration trenches here and here. Let's see, what they do is the runoff that comes from our building area goes into these things, and they will fill up to a certain point, and then the additional amount will runoff and go into the swell.
And you have a limiting, like, limiting orifice or something so it slowly goes out?
Yeah, well, this, I just did it with grades, but yes. The rest is all going to percolate into the ground, these are not...
So this is taking care of your lots?
Right.
And not, and slowing this down is a separate issue?
Slowing that down is a separate issue, as far as addressing that volume, again, that's, that's not our water, you know, by no means are we required to do so. But I understand, you know, slowing it down because we don't want to create an erosion problem. And again, I can do that with check dams and not using some, some coarser material in the swell itself.
Now, how do you get down to this? You just drive down the lanes?
Well, where the driveways are, actually, with this submission, we did put a construction sequence on there. Yeah, well, all the work will be from, from the top. When we get the permits for the driveways, that's also, you know, a highway work permit. We will start with the driveways, you know, and go from there, but I did set up a construction sequence to per lot, to pretty much minimize the amount of exposed soil at any one time, which is really what you want to do when you're, when you're in construction. But anyway, that's on.
Except the lot will be regraded, though. Still, the two lots will be regraded, with the exception of the sides, right?
What's, the areas of disturbance are what's shown in this, this heavy dash line, and you can see we also got that going around those infiltrators. It was, I think, what, 60% of the total, it was about 0.8 acres?
Now, how high is it then?
Well, that's two and a quarter feet right there, and that's about the highest point.
How much?
Two and a quarter, right there, that's about the highest point, that corner. These are all less than, it's all less than two.
Yeah, but the two adds up, I mean, you're not pitching the field.
Yes, sir.
You're pitching the field, you're stepping it down the slope?
Yeah, the field is pitched very close to existing grade, that's why I say that this is right here is the maximum depth of fill, and that's about two and a quarter, two and a half feet. And when we provide these sections that Dave's asking for, I think, you know, yeah, that'll be very, very helpful. So, what do you think, two per lot, Dave, what to do? One through the house, one through the septic?
I'd say if you can even cut it through the house and the septic, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. Well, unless, my guy, it might be easier just to do two, but...
That's fine.
Yeah.
Is there a time where it would be best for a subdivision?
You, you're talking during the day, or?
What do you guys think?
We actually have plenty of daylight.
Probably Saturday, actually.
Saturday is always the best for, I mean, I work...
This Saturday, I could actually, yeah, if...
Is that possible for anybody else?
I can't do Saturday, but go ahead. Saturday's a really bad day, but it's all right.
I could do Saturday or something in the morning.
Not in the morning?
Anytime Saturday?
I'm good on Saturday.
It goes anytime you guys want.
Meet at noon or something, is that, is that possible, is that?
I'm sorry?
For us to have a site visit?
It's fine with me. I'll let you in.
I suggest that you meet actually at the end of the culvert sec.
The bottom, okay.
Well, you know, from there, we can look at the drainage and everything, and, well, actually, no, we could park...
At the bottom of Cedar Ridge you're talking about?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking originally, but now that trees have leafed out, we won't be able to really see that far up in there, we'll be able to see how the drainage goes and, you know, where it eventually ends up. But I was thinking about parking, you know, you don't like to park along 218, stay pissed off.
Right.
But there is, you know, this is a real wide entrance over here, and I have parked over in here without any problems. So, so I don't know, it's, it's your, your choice, we could either meet at the end of, you know, Cedar Ridge or park on the Hawk Drive.
Would noon work for you?
I mean, it's Saturday, Saturday there probably won't be anybody, when do they graduate?
They graduate on Sunday.
So, okay.
Moving on Saturday.
So we'll meet at noon on, on the top of the slope?
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
And we'll, we'll just have a look for ourselves?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything else we can do tonight?
No, I mean, we, you know, we know we're not ready for that because we haven't heard back from Shiffo.
Do we need to address the waiver that was requested?
Oh.
He requested a waiver.
On the, yeah, topography within 100 feet of public lines, waiver for north and south of the site only.
Do you have the number handy, Dave?
Yeah, actually.
Is that in depth?
That is section 140 dash 138A6, and it comes up A and D, small a and d.
That's the only waiver we need for subdivision?
I think so, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, Dave, if you can...
There's going to be some 12117 waivers for preliminary also.
What's that?
Putting in water names and sewers and crews and...
Subdivision 3.
Okay.
Improvements that you have to put in unless they're waived.
Oh, well, we don't have sewer lines and water lines.
So we need a waiver.
Okay.
Right, but this is relative to, are you doing any map changes prior to the next hearing? That if we didn't give him this waiver, he would have to do this then prior to the next hearing or, I guess, prior to the public hearing, correct?
It would have to be done before the preliminary...
Map changes, sorry, map changes before the next meeting, we're going to, we're going to show those profiles through the site, we'll put some tree protections on there. When they did a tree survey, there were no leaves on the trees, the surveyor said, you know, deciduous conifer, I mean, that's all he gave me. Maybe this Saturday I'll go out and type the trees and see which ones, you know, are worth protecting and which ones aren't, get a more specific kind of plans with that, too.
Right, so your, your limit of disturbance should be roughly the canopy, you know, the extent of the canopy. If you turn the tree upside down, that's, that's really where, otherwise, it's going to be, you're going to disturb the roots and there's no point.
Yeah, the corundral drip line, yeah.
Yeah, you know generously, yeah.
Soil testing for pesticides, that's right where you're dealing, yeah. Okay.
Why don't we just hold off and do all the waivers together, but we have an understanding from Dave, which will be acceptable?
That's fine.
Great.
All right, thank you very much.
Great.
Well, we're talking, right? Y'all have a good night.
Okay, thanks. Good night.
Next on the agenda is a simplified site plan, sign plan waiver for a foundry architecture. Looks like nobody's here. We, he's not here.
It needs to be reported, Stacy's making the referral that she's... It meets all the guidelines, it's just sort of an aesthetic.
Did we, we got something from...
Yeah, I looked it over. Yeah, you can apply underneath it. There's optimism, we proved one versus the new one, and the only thing is it's definitely it's...
Size is the same?
Everything's the same.
Yeah. Matching his building with the tilt of the roof thing.
Yes, exactly.
Is that saying he's putting a bottle for a sign?
Yeah.
It's got that angle like the building.
His building's like that, so that's what he's doing with his sign.
I, I don't have the objection. We have a motion to the simplified site, sign, plan.
Make a motion.
Second?
Wait. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I think that's it for now, and we have real life coming up and changing places.
Well, on the old business, uh...
I'm sorry?
Last week, we, with the ShopRite presentation, we discussed about the trailers in the parking lot. Just want to make you aware that now that they have 10 additional vehicles parked in the parking lot now.
10 trailers?
The trucks.
Not trucks, trucks.
Wood chipping trucks, yeah.
Wood chipping trucks. So, as of yesterday, it was three trailers and 10 trucks instead of two trailers.
Well, I think they were on my street before that, so...
So, just, I just wanted to bring that to the attention because he did say that they sent a letter to the, to ShopRite.
Oh, one more thing, I can't be at the next meeting, so I don't know if you want to do a quorum check for that or not.
Quorum check for next meeting?
I think it's, yeah, 28th, I think.
We're going to be missing Mike, and we're missing Eileen, and we're missing LaGusta.
LaGusta.
And that will be one, two, three, Peter's here, we'll have a forum.
My, my old disease.
Hey, let me, let me check one thing, because that's a Wednesday, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's the thing, yeah.
I mean, that's my problem, is I'm not into these Wednesday meetings.
My understanding, those trucks, they were on my street too, so I stopped them, so they have like a pre-contract for a limited period of time that they're in town, doing, clearing lines, yeah, because I, they've been all over the place.
Because they've been dragging their feet on the trailers for the last three or four years, so maybe it's just a good, good push to get everything done.
Yeah, yeah.
I can be here on Wednesday, the 20th.
Okay. Okay, 20 is fine. Okay, so, we'll have a...
Okay.
Okay, what merit is up? Okay.
Okay, fine.
Be good to the...
Oh, thank you, thanks. Thanks. Is that your nameplate?
Oh, my nameplate.
You're not lying.
You're counting that?
That's what you hold the sign on?
Yes.
So we're just going to go through the finding statement?
Yeah. The TRF resolution that was provided last meeting?
Because I have a few details regarding this finding statement.
Do you want to invite the applicant?
Sure, if you have questions or comments, I'm, I should say for the record, I'm Lynn Bowdery, stepping in because Lyle Nolan refuses himself for Wilmerite applications. And, so, if you have anything new to tell us, you're quite welcome to come, otherwise you're here to enjoy the proceedings.
Might be a slight...
I have a really quick thing, because this brownfield, I know we got the memo about that project, I want to... I wonder if we could just discuss it for a minute, just so it'd be on the record or something.
Sure. And actually, I did address it in the amended finding statement because the application, notice of the application was received last week. What brownfields is, is a D C program provides for remediation for two classes of participants. One is called a participant, one's called a volunteer. The distinction is the extent of the responsibility and the nature of the, basically who caused the problem. It's a way to remediate sites that have been contaminated. It's typically done with commercial industrial sites, but it can be done agricultural sites as well. And there's a couple of instances that they discover where it was done to remediate arsenic and pesticide contamination was in excess of the state standards. So basically what you do is you apply, you submit a proposal and an application to the D C. D C reviews your proposal, does, they, they meet with you and discuss your proposal, they discuss the proposed investigation to determine what the problem actually is and how best to mediate it. And then they agree upon a remediation plan in concert with the applicant. There is a public participation process which the applicant will have to go through. It provides a general public comment. There's no specific requirement for a municipal approval as a consequence of this. But I believe you have to get the appropriate permits from the town to do that. So basically, what we do is it does much of what our remediation plan is, that has been developed through the E I S. Provides for concentrating and covering contaminated soils, replacing that with new soil that is not contaminated. And basically insulating the public or humans from contact with contaminated soils by covering either with the previous surface, road surfaces, buildings, or by tree firms and replacing the fill areas. The primary distinct, I did call the D C to ask them what was contemplated here. And to let them know there was a E I S that had been completed, it was a soil remediation plan as part of that. And I spoke with the program manager who would be handling the application. He told me the principal difference he sees is that there would be approximately a foot of fill on top of the berms and the fill areas, whereas the Ulster County Department of Health standards accepted six inches of more. So it's, it's more better is the way that I understand.
So I guess my que, well, I guess I understand it, but I guess my question is, why is this going forward right now? I guess I get it, all right.
I was told by the, one of the attorneys for the applicant that they wish to.
They wanted to get it ready to.
Go through this process because it means the D C can then say this has met our standards.
Yeah, okay, all right.
They won't do that without the ground field certification.
Now.
There is a text.
Just a question, now the D E C will do their own soil testing to determine?
They will review the soil tests that have been done, which I believe the applicant has submitted. And then they have, the program manager indicated to me that they will require some additional test forums and some more sampling on the property itself. One point that we're not aware of is that there is a proposal to lease the water supply area on the east side. And that that may or may not have an impact. He was not expecting an impact, but he said there will be a drawdown from the area, so it could affect.
So if there is an impact, or if the contamination is greater than the anticipated, what effect does that, would that have on the E I S?
What I have done is, oh, I think we can do at this point, which is acknowledge that process taking place, that there are studies that will be done. And the consequence of the activity is that the project, if it proceeds, will have to comply with the standards of T D C above, which are perhaps more protective, but certainly is deeply protective as the mitigation measures we identified. The final site plan, and if it, when it's approved, will have a mitigation plan, soil remediation, does have a soil remediation plan. But if D C requires more or more different, or something has to be moved around, the site plan will have to be consistent with that. That's, I think, generally, I don't see this as a potential downside. What it does is you have D C looking at it, pulling it to a somewhat stricter standard and set forth their regulations. Again, developed for contaminated industrial and commercial sites. And basically going through a process for results and D C being able to say this has met our criteria. More better.
May there be a, if the D E C comes up with some finding, might it impact what we would have said possibly in our?
Yes, and I think it is possible they could discover something different there that is there. Could discover a contaminant.
Other than arsenic.
I think that right now they've, based on review of the soil testing that has been done, they identified lead, arsenic, and. Felt, right? Yep. And these were, I discussed with David, these have all been identified in soil testing that's done so far.
Right.
And they are going to basically, as I understand it, test and validate the levels at different places on the site that they believe are appropriate.
And test to see if it's in any kind of water.
They are gonna get water samples on site, presumably, I would expect them in, D C is actually, D C is already involved in this because they have the issue of water withdrawal. So I would expect as part of this process, they're going to look at the water quality at the water supply wells across the way as well. But that's been tested by Part 5 standards and accepted.
Right, if D E C is issuing the water withdrawal permit, how come he wasn't familiar with the water system on the east side? Is it a different person?
You've heard of the saddle effect?
Yeah.
It's a different branch of D C.
Might be good, we talk to them again to tell them to chat with each other then.
Sort of raise an eyebrow. But for, for the purpose of the, I mean, the finding statement, it was just to review what happened.
Yeah.
On April 7th, you adopted a draft. There were some things that I had to conform, fill in the blanks, fill in the dates, fill in the appropriate reference of the F E I S. Started work on that on, I believe, on April 9th, the I D A issued determination. They adopted their own findings, they adopted a resolution. That resolution basically granted the category 5 pilot, granted it at the, based on their prior interpretation of a unit being federal, it granted a pilot for the payment set at 696 units times $750 per unit, highest rate under schedule. So the total pilot payment pursuant to that would be $522,000. That was in the last finding statement. It's one of the scenarios that we reviewed on April 6th. And her determination was that because the pilot can't be reallocated among the taxing jurisdictions proportion to the actual cost that will be incurred by each jurisdiction, as well as the potential for impacts on school history that were not fully anticipated in the F E I S. If those impacts were significant, they would affect community character, therefore, general grounds to deny it based solely on the secret. This amended resolution basically takes all the changes that were directed on April 7th, forms the document to that. It adds clarify the status of the pilot, consequence of the result from this particular flavor of pilot, and that's an area. And it comes to a conclusion that, based on the actions taken by the I D A to grant. So.
Did you say amended resolution or amended findings?
Uh, this is an amended finding statement.
Right, okay, because I never got an amended resolution.
No, the resolution is on the 25th, essentially, same document.
I just have details to go over regarding the finding statement that I've brought up before that have not made their way into this finding statement. So, under section 1.0, project background need description. I think it's page 2. We're discussing, and the applicant has always been very clear about this, 900, I'm sorry, 696 bedrooms. But then when we include the faculty units, we're talking about an additional 36 beds. However, as I've brought up previously, when we discussed the faculty units with the applicant and their consultant, Camoin, in October of 2013, when we went over their financial impact statement, they clearly said that there can be faculty members with partners who would subsidize the rent. And so I think what we need to do is we need to have language that says, altogether, the proposed action will provide 732 beds or as many as 756 individuals.
Right.
So could 6?
Right, so that's just 30 units times 2. So if it's a 2-bedroom unit, I guess it could be even higher, because you could have a 2-bedroom unit with a couple in one bedroom and a child in the other, because there are only 6 2-bedroom units and 30 1-bedroom units. But when we discussed how much it would cost to afford a faculty unit, and considering what faculty actually earn, Camoin and the applicant said, well, you can, you can often assume that there may be faculty with partners who subsidize the rent.
If they have a child, definitely need.
And if they have a child, so it's actually north of 756.
So a 6, that would be 762.
Individuals, I'm sorry.
762.
Right, so 732 beds or as many as 762 individuals.
And just in this section while we're here, one of the comments added was to reflect that this is, this determination is now required by your super findings. We have not completed site plan review, we're not making determination on the site plan. We're simply closing the book at this point based on the actions taken by the I D A, the consequences of that action on community character and population, which are part of Seeker's environmental definition.
And then, jumping ahead in this same section where it discusses assumptions, number 8. As represented by the applicant, 90% of the residents will relocate from housing in areas outside the New Palt's zip code. I've, I've brought this up numerous times where that's an assumption by the applicant. And I understand that we're saying as represented by the applicant, but so many times throughout this document, we're using that assumption.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a, it's an assumption that is not backed up with any analysis, any studies. It's just a number pulled out of thin air, as far as I'm concerned.
Assumed fact.
I'm sorry?
It's an assumed fact.
Right, but.
It's a starting point for the discussion.
But, but.
But there's nothing behind it.
Then there are several other assumed facts that have been asserted by the applicant. For instance, 65% of their anticipated rent roll will go towards maintenance of this property. Right, so are we using that, you know, in our finding statement? That was something that was asserted by Camoin and the applicant.
That particular one was reviewed by C G R and you have a different opinion on it.
Right, and I mean, that's, that's often the challenge with this entire process is Camoin did not review every single study and every single assumed fact.
But the purpose of this assumption section is to set forth things which we acknowledge are assumptions. And that's subject to validation, to review, if it has been done in the E I S process. But it's also subject to future review when there is a failure to achieve that assumption.
Okay, well, then I would like additional language that, instead of saying something like, as presented by the applicant, use some of the language that you just offered, in that this is an assumption. You know, additional color that, you know, makes it, and I think by not including additional color, it's, it, to me, it implies that there was a study done, and at no time have we ever seen a study by Camoin, the university, anyone, talking about this 90% of residents will relocate from housing outside the area.
Wait, did C G R have something to say about that?
They did not, I believe, when we discussed that topic with C G R, it was kind of at the end of our, of our engagement with them, and they said, well, if you want us to keep looking at this stuff, you have to keep paying us. And then moving on to number 15.
Where are we going with that, though?
Yeah, let's go 15.
What would happen if we just took out assumption 8?
Well, we use it several times in this finding statement.
The purpose of this section is to make clear what is an assumption.
Yeah.
And what use you've made of this.
Yeah, okay.
And absent any information, an assumption is, it's not, it could be conjecture, it could be logic, it could be, there are bases to offer.
Well, then, then maybe the way to do that then is to qualify when you, under assumptions, that, you know, some of the following may or may not be based on any facts provided by the applicant.
It does say as represented by the applicant, so it doesn't, it doesn't make it sound like we're endorsing that number.
Every time you look at a plan, someone will make a representation. This is gonna be a single-family home, this is gonna be, there's gonna be an infiltration basin. People make representations as part of their application. You then have an obligation, if that is a significant part of your determination, to record that and to determine whether or not they adhere to in the future. And what I think you could do is say, these are the assumptions and representations you rely upon. If there is a divergence or failure to implement the plan in accordance with these assumptions, it will require a further assessment.
My trouble with this statement too is it's not only used here, it's also used in other places in the document where we then go on to, to discuss the situation further using this assumption.
Correct.
And I don't feel that the assumption, because it's, it has, you know, we've seen no studies, no evidence that it might be true, should be used. And, and, you know, if you leave it here, then we're gonna have to adjust in the other sections where we extrapolate on this assumption. And we can find them, you know, as we go through the document.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's defer that one for consideration after we go through it.
Well, for instance, though, based on what Tim is talking about, when I was going through the F E I S on page 139, they were talking about, based on these, the 90% from outside of the area, discussing the low occupancy rates and the fact that it shouldn't have that over-saturating effect on our rental thing. I think in the F E I S, it, there should be a phrase in there saying that this assumption has not been tested. Or some, some manner of qualification, if we were going to make corrections. make corrections to things in the FEIS that we thought were not quite right. And, you know, some sort of a qualification should go in there, because there were a number of assertions, as I was reading through, that sounded a lot more definite than what I remember us discussing. And I'm sorry I didn't bring these up, you know, months ago, I suppose. But, you know, just reviewing it afresh to make sure that our findings reflect what they should be reflecting, I couldn't help but notice that kind of thing.
Yes.
Wording that sounds more definite than we would have.
Yeah, and I can also, there's another example, I mean, there are four times in this document where we use this 90% number, and this is in section K.
New K or old K? Didn't we just get a new K?
Is this the findings or the?
This is the finding statement. Yeah, I've only reviewed the finding statement. But I have it at, it's like roughly page 47, I have it at line 2316. There's a section called "The Planning Board Makes the Following Findings With Respect to Police Services." "The project will increase the number of college-age residents in the town by 14%. As the applicant anticipates that 90% of those residents will come from areas outside the town and village, there will be a commensurate increase in activity in the downtown business area associated with college-age residents, guests, and other visitors." See, there's an example of us using this number. And, and I believe we are, we are, we should not be using this number. This is a totally unfounded study.
The purpose of that, as I recall, is to show that there will be students in the downtown area.
Right, but you're, then you could, you could say that exact same thing without referencing this, this 90%.
But, from my standpoint, that is an actual admission by the-
But I think it terribly understates the impact downtown.
Well, if it says that 90% of the students are coming from out of town, now living in the town, the project will be going downtown. I'm not sure how that understates. Because the other 10% are coming from the village already. So if this project took all the students from the village, those kids are already going downtown.
Actually, you know, I think I may have made a mistake in this example, and this, I agree, would benefit the applicant in this case. So, in that, what, I agree, what we're saying is that there would be an increased amount of activity downtown.
Right.
And I think we can say that, but we should not be using this 90% number. I agree with you. Actually, the impact using, using the applicant's number would make the impact greater. And my concern is, is one of accuracy.
So how about we just knock out the 90%?
I'd want to be accurate and use defensible numbers.
Why don't we just say as, like, some of these residents are just something like a word instead of a percentage, that since we're just making up the percentage. Like, as the applicant anticipates that
Proposed, that the proposed residents.
Will come from, yeah. Would that make you feel more comfortable? Yeah, why do we need to use exactly 90% if we don't agree with them? Or it doesn't seem factual?
That's my concern.
Well, the point is, the applicant-
Is using that, yeah.
Is making that representation.
Yeah.
And for various purposes, you take the assumption and assume it.
Yeah, but we're not disagreeing with the-
I'm not-
Which doesn't, you give the assumption, whatever validity it's entitled to. But if an applicant is telling you, there's going to be 90% of these students coming from out of town, and the current behavior pattern of students, if students living in town go to town and party, the presumption is that increase of 90%, that's going to increase the number at least 90%.
To me, that's like cherry picking. It's like, you know, because this number can make a stronger case for additional demands on police, then we're, then we're using the applicant's number that paints that picture. Whereas, I believe there will be a significant demand on police. I just don't believe you hang your hat on this, on arriving at that number through this study.
The point is, no one disagrees. You do disagree. The applicant is saying it's going to be at least 90%. That's the applicant's representation. 90% of the students who come to this project come from out of town and ask for police protection. That's what the applicant is talking about. It's not something you have to prove. It's not something you have to assert.
But you see, you see what I mean? Like, the problem that I have with that is, if I disagree with the applicant's number, I don't ever want to use it. So, if there's another point that talks about the impact downtown, and the applicant's flawed number makes my point stronger, I do not think I should use that number.
You may never agree on the numbers, though.
Which is fine. I don't want to put a number in there, and because we don't have any study showing how many, how many students will come from outside of the-
I got you, but I'm just saying you may never agree on a number, so that, that's a moot point. So you either include numbers that, and you indicate that there was an assumption made, and the applicant said this, or you take them all out.
What about every time we use that number, the four times, we put in parentheses, we'd like to state there's been no study that finds that this number is correct? Something explicit, you know?
That could be the appropriate thing to put in the statement of assumptions. We are taking, the applicant is asserting-
Just add a sentence about that.
The applicant has not provided anything other than representation. There is-
No documentation.
There is, there is what I would call a qualitative letter from SUNY stating that there are many students who are interested, who are on a waiting list, and so on, so on. It's in the, it's in the EIS. Whether that supports 90%, 75%, 50% is not established. It's a qualitative assertion. We believe there's going to be many students. And it can be 90, maybe 50. So if you want to add something here with this, the applicant has said 90%.
Yeah, great.
And that is an estimate, conjecture, however you want to qualify it. You're saying this is what this assumption is. This is the merit that we believe is entitled to this assertion. You can do that.
So would you be okay with on page three, just putting a line that says, "This number has not been verified"?
I think that would help on page three.
Well, we could put that every time it's used. I don't, you know.
Well, then you say you had a footnote or something.
Yeah, yeah, on the footnote, yeah.
Nothing wrong with reading down here. There's nothing wrong.
But, Tim, that's not your only issue, was, that was an example, correct?
For the, this 90% number?
Right, you had other ones like this?
Well, there's two other times that we're using it.
No, I meant, I thought there were other numbers too. It's easy enough to find. You found already four of them probably, but were there other numbers that you felt were not, were in question, that are represented in the document, or is this the one, pretty much?
Oh, I have several things to go over.
Right, but we're talking about numbers right now, so we're trying to-
Yeah, several numbers, sure.
And was something else in that assumptions list that you wanted to discuss?
Yeah. Number 16, taxable elements of the site plan. Faculty housing estimated at 5.5 million, clubhouse estimated at 1 million, water and sewer infrastructure estimated at 4.5. So if you add those three numbers up, that's 11 million? Right, but throughout the document, we use 10.5, not 11. Should be 11 throughout.
Okay, we'll clarify. If those are based on the assessors'-
I know, I know they're based on the assessors'. The other problem with these numbers, and, and folks within our community and the applicant have brought this up many times, where they say, "Well, you know, this, this discussion is about a pilot for the student housing." But I see an issue with the assessed values that we have here, because you can look at the February 2013 IDA application, where the applicant asserts that, you know, in the first three years where they're scaling in to building the faculty units, I don't think it's necessarily relevant, but when they get to, I think it's like year four or five, they claim that the full assessed value of the faculty housing would generate $58,000 in total taxes. So, that, that implies that our tax rate in New Palt's is about 1%. But the reality is, our tax rate in New Palt's is about 3% of your assessed value. So, you, we're going to have an issue here where, you know, again, the applicant is going to say, "Well, these, these portions of our project have to be assessed at very low amounts." I'm sorry?
$11 million is the actual, I think it was 11.
Well, no, the assessor is asserting that they would be assessed at 11 million.
What I'm referring to is the February 27 meeting for the town board.
Oh, that's for the entire project, right. Yeah, all I'm talking about is the stuff that the applicant has asserted would be on the tax rolls, paying full taxes.
Which is an issue for the pilot, because the way the pilot has been structured, these elements of the project are included in the pilot. And they are going to pay tax at the taxable rate, which is based on the assessment. So if the assessor is assessing them at a value which would, if I recall correctly, require payment of $315,000. And the applicant is proposing, in one case, a benefit program which would include a assessment, tax paid on the faculty housing, I think it was 10,007. We have a failure to agree on what the assessment is. And that's being reflected in the applicant's proposal, and it's for the reason that the pilot isn't accurate. We don't have the ability to determine or rely upon what the actual.
Well, I think if we, if we're including an assumption like number 16, and we're talking about, you know, the, the assessed values for the faculty housing, water, sewer, and the clubhouse, we should say, you know, "Based on our current tax rate, this $11 million worth of assessed value would generate X number of dollars in, in tax, tax revenue." Like, we need to be on the record having said that.
That's right.
You know, because based on what the applicant has asserted in their IDA application, they're saying that the the faculty housing would not be assessed at 5.5 million, but it would be assessed at 1.9 million based on our current tax rate. That's a huge difference in in what they think their assessed value should be.
George, where do these estimated numbers in number 16 come from? Are they things that Lori King?
They were, my recollection is it was based on a memo she did.
Yeah.
Well, should that not be referenced, that that's what that is?
It could be. I mean, I have the worksheets from Lori, so I double-checked them.
Put the reference in it.
I think the reference would be helpful, so that we know who's referenced, and then that makes it clearer. I think that addresses your point then, Tim.
And this would be sort of a, the town assessor's estimates?
Yes.
Yeah, that clarifies that, at least it gives it some
Problem.
Basis that can be checked. Are, are we planning to just go through this page by page, or, because you had asked us?
Basically, there's two ways of proceeding. One is if people do have specific comments that we can work through and dispose of, that is fine. The other choice is if there are no specific questions, I can take you through and just point out the changes between the April 7th and the current amended findings. The emphasis on the amendments, not so much the, I told them this point.
Well, should we go through everyone's points first, and just get those down?
Yeah, I have a few more points. I'm just trying to scroll down to them. So, and, you know, obviously, a lot of them will be, a lot of my, my points now will be in section K, community services. So in that, in that section where we're talking about the, you know, we start here with 736 residents, you know, that needs to be up to 762 residents. I actually have one here that, I, this looks like something that you added recently in section K, B, fire protection. It says, "The fire department represents that there were 1,022 calls to the SUNY campus in 2011." That, I believe, is a very high number. I, I don't think there are that many calls to the SUNY campus. I mean, I was at the, the fire district discussion last week with the joint village and town board, and I think in 2013, there were definitely fewer than 1,000 calls as a total fire department. I mean, because it's considered an important tipping point. Like, once our community, both town and village combined, have more than 1,000 calls, that's, you know, we've heard, we've heard that at this table several times. So here, you know, we've made it, we've made an assertion that, that seems incorrect, which is-
I'll check that, make sure. Some of these numbers are usual.
Yeah. Tom said that he believes that's wrong, too.
I'll check.
I don't want to misrepresent and say that we're, we have more fire calls at the SUNY campus than we actually have. And then, you know, moving a couple of paragraphs down, you know, this, this reference to "The town assessor estimated that the full assessed value of the project would be 54.5 million." I believe it's, it's 44 for the student housing, and then plus the 11 for the other three items that we discussed.
Yeah, which is, it is 54.5, that much, so it's 10.5 plus whatever. But the point of this is-
No, no, but it, in that, in that assumption section of above, you have 4.5 plus 5.5 plus 1. That's 11.
That may be.
Well, if it's a mistake, we have to fix that.
This, 54.5 is correct.
54.5 is correct. So then, whatever we're saying in that earlier-
49 here.
Okay.
Oh, right.
I don't want to overstate what we believe the assessed value would be.
So what is the correct figure?
The total assessed value, based on the assessor's assessment, is 54.5.
Okay.
Okay, now moving down to H for schools. We've discussed this idea a few times, and I think we've begun addressing it here, but I don't think we, we fully incorporated this concept of, if SUNY has said they have no intentions of increasing enrollment, and we're increasing housing stock intentions of increasing enrollment and we're increasing housing stock in our community by 5% or, you know, if we're using the number, 762 beds from Park Point alone, you know, we made reference to, to studies that talk about, like, what happens in a community when you add X number of beds? You know, there can be 14% of those beds can represent K through 12 students. So I think it's, it's, we're not identifying the full impact when we only talk about six school-aged kids and then we say six times 23,000 is approximately 138,000. Because if you have additional housing stock of 760 beds, you're talking north of, of over 100 more K through 12 kids. And then...
Tim, I'm not following that. Go back on that again, then? So you're, the housing stock, the 736, is, you're talking about Park Point or...
Right, just Park, just Park Point. So if the college has said, "We're not, we're not increasing enrollment,"
Right.
Right?
Yep.
And we're adding additional housing stock.
Right.
So it's reasonable to assume that a percentage of that total housing stock will be absorbed by some K through 12 kids.
But with student, if it's student housing, I don't think that's a reasonable assumption, then.
Well, actually, I believe it's a very reasonable assumption because a lot of the student housing in the village are single-family homes that were converted to student houses.
Well, that's different. That's, we're talking right now about Park Point, though. So we're talking on campus, right? So I think that that may be true. That's why I was asking what you're, what you're asking about. If you're talking about housing that it's replacing or opening up in town, that's one thing. If you're talking about Park Point, that's a different thing and I think the metrics are very different in terms of what you're going to be looking at at Park Point for student housing. It's not reasonable to assume that there's going to be, you know, 10% of children on that for Park Point.
No, 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 no.
Or whatever a number is.
I mean, that's not the point that Tim is making.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Making a very different point.
This, this thing about schools only is addressing the possible six school-aged children who will be at Park Point.
Right, okay.
However, Park Point could have the effect of causing existing student housing in the village and town to be vacated and be backfilled.
Okay, that's what I was asking you. Yeah, yeah, understood.
But this is also part of the broader SEER process.
No, I get that. I get that. That's why I was asking for clarification.
The broader unintended consequences of increasing housing stock.
And we don't have figures for that. We can't, no. Although, since there, you know, suppose, and I've heard this before, if 90% of the assumed students are from elsewhere, 10% must be from here. So...
If you look at the next page, discussion on that page.
So you just both said the same thing.
It's a qualitative...
That's all I wanted, clarification, right.
...of your point. Which is, there are students coming out of the village. There is a definite number based on the applicant's...
Where are you, George, now?
Uh, on the next...
Page 57?
No. I'm going off the, I'm going off the red line here, but it is...
What line are you?
My school starts on page 56. How it impacts is on page 57.
Yep.
On the next page.
58.
Okay.
There's a sentence part of that range.
Third paragraph, so down. Right, okay.
All right, right, there it is.
Yeah, it's reasonable to assume that assessing student unit temporarily vacant, oh, this? No, nevermind.
Okay, so there...
Right, but that's your, your qualitative assessment, but I think by only having a qualitative discussion of it and then up above by assigning quantitative figures, we're not, we're not capturing the full impact. We're not capturing the full...
Well, we don't know what the full impact would be. We just don't know that.
Right, but we've heard from...
All we have to do is start from a point.
Sure, and we've heard from...
And that point is what the applicant is representing. 10% will come from in the village. You can do the math, come up with a number, and say there will be X number of vacant beds in the village.
Right, but we've also heard from, from numerous folks in the community...
Did your testimony, public hearing, the IDA also heard testimony to that effect that there would be a significant amount of those beds coming from areas either directly in the 12561 zip code or adjacent to it. So that there will be more rent pressure because some of those students are going to come from places close. So the rents in the village may decrease. There was testimony from landlords who obviously have an interest, but they also have knowledge that there are vacancies now that aren't being filled in the current condition. So you have the responsibility to evaluate that as best you can, taking into account the information you get from both the applicant and the public, as well as the school board and the town board, and come to a conclusion. That is not going to be a precise mathematical formula, but does offer you, there is, there is a starting point from which you can go, which is the 90% number, which is what the applicant is saying, well, that.
Right, and as I discussed earlier, that does not, that 90% number does not make sense. There are no studies that back up that 90% number. Whereas there are studies that talk about when you add housing stock with no additional demand from the college to offset that new housing stock, you can expect a certain percentage of K through 12 students to enter your local school district.
Right.
So we do not have any discussion of that in, in this document, whereas we've heard numerous comments from the public who were concerned about that. And there are studies to back that up as opposed to this 90% number, which is not verifiable and has never been verified.
There are studies, what's a study that you refer to? I've seen studies which basically, and I think we've discussed them, which basically say in certain, certain types of 12 units, typically have certain student generation numbers. If you have one bedroom, it's very low, it's like 217 per unit. So for every 10 units, you might get a better set of students. There are, it goes up slightly when it's two-bedroom units, it goes up more when there's a four-bedroom. But conversely, this is assuming you fill the house on your take...
Right, so obviously, if you have a four-bedroom house, you're going to have more K through 12 students. So I think what you...
If you have a four-bedroom house, it's currently occupied by five, 16 students.
Instead of debating this all night, could we, does anyone on the board have a problem with having a sentence that reflects this position in the document? I do not.
What's the sense?
What's your ideal sense?
Something along the lines of, you know, if we're talking about approximately 760 new beds becoming available and they're not being offset by demand from the college, you can expect a percentage of that 760 to be absorbed by K through 12 students.
Where are they coming from? That's the fundamental question that gets to the 90%. You don't have enough...
Well, where they're coming from are the numerous studies that we looked at. And like you pointed out, if it's, if it's just one-bedroom apartments that's being added, it's going to be, you know, maybe as few as like 10% of those one-bedroom apartments. Whereas if it's a larger four-bedroom house, it's going to be closer to 30% are going to be occupied by K through 12 students. So you could, you know, you could take an average and then you could, for the sake of conservatism, you could even like cut it in half and just go, you know, really low end, like something like 14% of the, of the beds will be occupied by K through 12.
The other way to cut the, slice the...
The chicken.
The chicken. But the other way to look at it is, where is the point at which the impact starts? So you have a revenue stream coming from the pilot, goes to the school district. You have the capping effect of the pilot, how that impacts it, so take aside. But if, if you have, for instance, for example, $300,000 in money going to the school district from the project and the cost of educating one student is, what's the local share again?
23K per kid.
No, local share.
Local share of what?
Local share of student education. I thought it was 23 total and then 25 percent.
What percentage is that of the, what the town pays versus...
Oh, 60%?
What?
16 or 17,000?
Oh, if you're doing 60%.
Of the 23.
Oh, right, right. Right, so the state picks up 24%.
So the state takes...
So you could say a quarter, a quarter of the 23,000, sure. So local taxpayers have to pay 17 or 16 change.
Right. So you take, you cut to find the analysis by 16,000 times some number of the revenue is where the impact started in school.
Right, and as we, as we have learned, because of the tax cap legislation, any pilot revenue cannot be used for, for absorbing new, new students. It can only be used to, to lower, lower the tax rate or to go back to taxpayers.
The new costs have to be, new costs can increase the cap. So if you have new costs, you have to cut services.
That's right.
Function. So the point becomes, what's the new cost that you can absorb without, and a point you made last time is, there were 40 students last time, well, last 2012.
Thirty-four, right, 34, 34 students enter, 34 net new students entered the school district in the last year. And that's with no new housing.
As with no, no housing.
So here we have a situation with new housing, so even if you, you bump it up to 100 new K through 12 kids, that's 2.3 million dollars that has to be paid for from somewhere. But we know that the, the mechanics of pilots do not allow for any of that pilot revenue to be used to pay for those new students. So the only, the only thing the school district can do is increase student-to-teacher ratios and cut programs. That is what the school district is required to do because of the tax cap legislation and how it is structured and how pilots affect the tax levy.
So there is much we agree on. We will, and the question then becomes, if, if there is a pilot and there is an increase in services, what's the point at which those two things cross? So that you can calculate the point at which this, the impact takes place.
Right, so if there's a pilot and, and the school district is receiving...
Say 300,000 dollars of profit.
Right, but, but...
So we can reduce the taxes.
But the, no, but, but George, there's an additional problem. The only way, you would then be required to, to go to the supermajority. You'd have to, you'd have to then put forth a budget that requires a 60% supermajority.
Yes, if you want to increase the taxes...
If you want to increase...
Above the cap.
Right.
Which, the school district knows that works.
To pay for, to pay for the new students that are created by a housing project.
And what you, your point is, there is also the secondary impact of infill.
Secondary impact of what?
Infill.
So you have six students arguably coming from the project. That's the number that was used in the IIS. Presumed, it may or may not be high, but that's the number the applicant calls we read. The question then becomes the secondary consequences of infill created by...
Vacancies and...
Vacants. And what's the...
By increased housing stock, right.
Yes, and what's the point at which the impact happens?
Well, you could apply whatever vacancy rate you want and, you know, and say it's a, it's going to be a 10% vacancy rate, but we've, so if we're adding 5% to our population and we have 760, then it's, it's 90% of 760. And then 90% of 760 times 14%, that gets you the, you know, the number of new K through 12 students. That number times 23,000 is well over a million dollars, closer to $2 million.
Given that that's true, though, as regards to the findings, the wording in the findings, I think, gives you plenty of space to, that bears that out without stating that there will be, you know, 11 or 23 or 34. It does say...
Because we don't know.
We just need to...
For instance, it says, I'm, I'm on line 2992. However, over the term of the category five pilot, the cumulative impact of these trends make it likely that the district will experience an increase, likely, an increase in the number of students as a consequence of direct and secondary impacts of the project. While the direct impact of the faculty housing component of the project is reasonably capable of being quantified, the secondary impact of the project is subject not only on the accuracy of the applicant's assumption that only 10% of the residents will come from existing student rentals. See, it's subject to the accuracy of that assumption. That means that if that assumption is not accurate, it could be wildly in either direction. It's, it's subject to the accuracy and, and that is the assumption. So there it is, for what it's worth.
I just think we need to...
And then it goes on to...
Show where you are.
Say that, and on long-term trends affecting the population characteristics of the district. I, I think that pretty much says it. I don't think we have to embellish it farther.
Well, I, I disagree. I, I'm not comfortable not assigning some sort of range. You know, you know, a lot of folks, I, I've been very frustrated, don't seem to understand the magnitude of a housing project. And when you have the potential of 100 new K through 12 kids, at $23,000 a pop, that's 2.3 million dollars. Where is the, the tax revenue going to come from?
You're talking about a housing project.
Which is, which is what Park Point is, yeah. I'm talking about Park Point.
Well, you're talking about the housing. You're talking about pilots in the same sentence. When you say a housing project, you're talking about Park Point.
Yeah, I'm not talking about a pilot right now. I'm talking about a housing project. Pilot comes afterwards. But if you just look at increasing housing stock, if you're increasing the housing stock by 760 individuals, a percentage of those 760 individuals will be K through 12 students.
In the normal process, yes.
Right, and, and to err on the side of being conservative, look at the, the studies that say it's 10% of that additional housing stock or 30% of that housing stock, use 10%. So 10% of 760 is 76 kids. So 76...
But you're not differentiating between the actual project and the secondary effect on the overall real estate units available. So what needs to be clarified is that, say, there are 760 additional beds or people or whatever coming in.
At the project on Park Point, right.
There's going to be some shuffling going on and so while this project, due to its characteristic that they intend to rent to, may only logically add a certain number of students, the repercussions to the secondary market aren't as predictable, but they can result in considerable new school-aged children as the other real estate units get occupied by a different demographic, which is not at all inconceivable.
Right, like if the college had said that they were increasing enrollment to offset this new housing stock, you know, see, that's the thing, it's like, I feel like we have a role, you know, through SEER to look at this project broadly and how it affects our broader community. We're not just looking at Park Point in a vacuum. We're not just saying like, oh, well, you know, six two-bedroom apartments, so, six kids. kids. It's like, our role is to look at this broadly, look at the, the broader environmental impact.
Could you propose some language that would allow you to feel comfortable with this so we can move along?
Sure.
What we could do is, at the end of this, it could be subject to review by Tim, the chairman, the engineer, and final two minutes.
There we go.
And then this.
Okay.
And you're, you would...
Do you want to review that one?
Well, then, is, how, how would you word that so that if we're going to approve this document...
If you approve the concept, the specific language can be agreed upon by...
Yeah, that's a good idea. Can approve the concept.
So, so would you repeat the concept again, what?
That the final version of the finding statement would reflect the language deemed appropriate by the chairman and Sam Rogers, committee of the board, basically.
Uh-huh, and so we wouldn't all be looking at it once?
Well, why wouldn't you just at the last, if it's like, it's going to be less than, it's going to be probably two lines.
I think if there's any question...
You just send it out and let them look at it. Just send it out, let everybody look at it, because it's going to be two lines or three lines and what's the difference?
And it'll be included in exactly that paragraph that began with however that, that, that Lynn was reading, because I, I agree, qualitatively, that paragraph does capture this concept, but I think unless you assign some ranges, it, it just goes right over folks' heads.
Well, the other point that may be helpful is if you can quantify the true point for a impact.
Quantify what?
How the impact would actually be true. If one student is generated, this is what happens to the school district, the consequence of that is so.
You mean as in a dollar and cents? Like, one student equals worth sixty, sixteen thousand is what he said, something plus that?
Yes, but in a more nuanced sense, because the fact that you have to pay for one more student may or may not produce significant impact upon the...
Right, it doesn't. That, that, one, one extra kid does not affect the school district.
Right.
It's, it's when you have...
But if it's thirty-five, then you're really talking.
And when you, when you can show the project will cross that point, that's when you can...
I don't know that we can be able, we're not able to assess that.
We don't know what the impact is going to be, but there will be an impact.
We won't be, we won't be able to, we won't be able to capture that.
I don't know if we have those figures though, to be able to give that range.
Sure, there, there are absolutely studies, George and I were just discussing them. When you add, when you add housing stock...
Housing stock is different, adding housing stock and what we're talking about, Tim, as we keep going back and forth saying, Park Point is a very discreet type of housing stock. I know what you're saying is, and going back to what Lynn said, the secondary impact is in town, and that's what, that's what's difficult to quantify. And I don't think that there are studies that are, I don't think there are studies that are going to show you that when college housing is built, that the vacancy rate in the town, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm talking about when you increase housing stock, you can expect ten to thirty percent of those beds to be occupied by K through twelve students. It's just that simple.
And you're talking new housing stock though? I'm not sure that there's a study that's going to show old housing stock that becomes vacant and then there's a percentage of children move out in a college town. This is a kind of a nuanced thing.
I, I think you're making it more complicated than it has to be.
There are studies out of New Jersey which do show variations depending upon the...
The type of housing.
Value of the housing. So if it's, if it's high quality and it's two-bedroom, we give you one number, if it's low affordable, you know, stuff that's been around, they'll give you...
Yeah, that's why I said if, if the range is ten to thirty percent, you, you take the average and then you cut it in half. You error on the side of, of being really, really conservative using a, a low number, but it's still based on a, a range of studies.
So then you're going to come up with some language on that and then pass it around to the board members?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great.
But these studies haven't been in our record.
There is a reference to them in the supplement that I handed out, I believe it's last week. If not...
A supplement?
There was a series of supplemental documents that will be incorporated in the FEIS, public hearing, the CGR report, the, not CGR, the Camoyen report for the IDA.
Did you identify the one that you were saying, saying from New Jersey?
I think I did.
That may have been done by my former company?
Not by you, I think.
No, it wasn't done by me. That's why I was, when you said that, I was like, boing.
But the concept has also been, been discussed at our planning board tables and the IDA hearing. So this is not like, we're not creating anything new.
For shell list again?
Disgust.
It's not on this list, but I'll incorporate and provide you with clues.
I think, yeah.
As long as we get, we're adding this.
The real point about this is that there was, again, we're going through a somewhat unique, not a somewhat handcrafted EIS process where the FEIS was completed because of the documents and the information is not provided as part of the DIS, that there have been public hearings both by the planning board and by the IDA, as well as a fair amount of discussion about the nature of the impacts of the pilot. And that you have had people present evidence here that the IDA could serve...
That are now represented in our FEIS, if that's what you're saying.
They will be reflected in the finding statement because that's what we have to do. Yeah, moving right on.
Yeah. So, back to our resolution. You, you will work together then on inserting the wording?
Well, we will insert wording that will clarify and incorporate quantitative references to the extent possible.
And then circulate it.
And circulate it for the order you...
It's going to be three or four sentences at most probably, right? I would guess.
Okay, and so that is...
You, you will authorize chairman to sign subject to certain things happening, that will be...
You know, also at the end of this, section K, it's a couple paragraphs up, it's number ten. Ten is four paragraphs long and at the end of section K, do you see that?
Yeah.
It's, it's the paragraph that starts, "This compounds the uncertainty of budget planning as Camoyen Associates reported makes it more likely that school districts will be forced to continue cutting services to remain under the tax cap." And then you, you recently added, "The planning board takes notice that when the school district's 2012 budget was put to a referendum to override the tax cap limit, the budget failed to pass." I think an additional data point that's, that's relevant is that, and I, I can check this, but I believe it's something like only six percent of school districts statewide have tried to pursue supermajorities above their tax cap in 2013. And then there's, then there's, and then of that six percent of the school districts, only a few of them succeeded. So it's just like, it's very uncommon for school districts to pursue supermajority.
Yeah, just give me a source for that information.
Yeah, I can get that from the School District Association. I missed something up above in our assumptions section under that one point zero part. Need to make everyone flip back. I think it's like page three or four. Yeah, number fifteen.
Three.
Yeah, is it page three?
Yeah, yeah.
So number fifteen, "Any change of use to non-student housing will require site plan approval amendment of this finding statement. Will release the project from any student housing pilot property tax exemption." I think you have to change that assumption because, you know, we're saying, you know, you should just remove the, the part about the pilot property tax exemption. Yeah, you could just say, "Any change of use to non-student housing will require site plan approval."
And then a...
Right.
And possibly a supplemental.
What's that?
And possibly a supplemental EIS.
Yeah. And then at the, at the end of section K, flipping all the way back, it seems like this is a new paragraph that you created to update the, the county IDA's action on the ninth of April. I, maybe we can discuss this as a board, but I'm wondering if, kind of in the middle of it where it says, "Any suitable adjustment mechanisms in the pilot to adjust payments to cover future increases in the cost of police, fire, and emergency services," and I'm wondering if we should also say, "And school district." As opposed to only referring to the emergency services. And we use this paragraph and it seems like you're using it a few different places, like in the conclusion, the final conclusion as well.
Which line in this, what, the first page?
What's that?
Three, three, four, six. Line three, three, four, six.
Three, three, eight, though. How come you have a different note line? We both have the red line version.
I don't know. I have sixty-three.
Is it four, eight?
It's yours, four, eight. Yeah. A bit different, three, three, eight.
Right, so Lynn, Lynn has it.
Oh, wait a minute. This is...
Just read the point of entry.
Yeah, that's the latest, that's what I just printed tonight.
Yeah, this is the latest.
Yep.
And you got different numbers?
I have different numbers.
Oh, I give up.
I don't know.
This is, this thing does not work well, I mean, it worked.
Okay, so it's, it's a paragraph as the IDA has taken action.
Page sixty-five.
Or to provide...
Sixty-five.
To grant the category five pilot and no action was taken to reallocate the pilot payments to fully cover the directed indirect costs that the student housing units will impose on the town, or to provide any suitable adjustment mechanisms in the pilot to adjust payments to cover future increases in the cost of police, fire, and emergency services. And the school district, I mean...
Right, so police, fire, emergency, school district.
Right.
Oh, next one. Missing a paragraph.
And we're not even talking about the cap right there.
So maybe you're missing...
It's not our...
The county, the IDA.
Yeah, a good point, that should be added.
And that, that thing, you could probably do a, a search because that paragraph is a few places. I also had something in the, the growth inducing aspects of the project. It's like, pretty near the bottom. I have it at page ninety-three.
I don't even have a page.
Yeah, I mean, because what I, what I, yeah, when I edit it, I just insert and then it bumps everything down, so it's...
That's why I sent you a PDF.
Yeah, but I can't edit it to a PDF that way.
Okay, so I have page eighty-nine.
So there's this paragraph, it looks like it's five paragraphs down, the one that says, "As discussed in the CGR review of the applicant's fiscal impacts assessment, it is anticipated that the project..." Does everyone see that paragraph?
Yeah.
Because you're saying here, "CGR estimates that the net beneficial impact of relocating that population will not exceed eight hundred K and likely would be lower." My review of the CGR report, I think it would be more accurate to say, "The peer review said that from an Ulster County perspective, spending from new residents would be zero or possibly six hundred and thirty thousand dollars using more favorable assumptions where residents are new to the region."
If the other members are comfortable, we can come up with a specific change.
Does that, this...
It's the second, the last, it's the second.
Does everyone see where I'm referring to, where that will not exceed eight hundred K?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And that number is six hundred, Tim? You said six hundred and something?
Yeah, you know, the, the CGR folks said that from an Ulster County perspective, spending from new residents would be zero or possibly six hundred and thirty using more favorable assumptions.
Okay, are there any other items that need to be addressed? George, did you have anything else to add?
No, since the board has read this carefully, it is, I wonder what the contention is with the changes that we have discussed.
You'll do the search and find it.
Consider action.
Okay, then I should ask for a motion to accept it with the changes that you had proposed at, at our meeting tonight and also with the, once the new phrases have been added. You know, I, I'm not very good at putting together these motions, but I want to make sure everything's in there that, that we agree upon when it's been emailed out, I guess.
Essentially what you're, there are two or three points that Tim has offered where the board will like the revisions.
Yeah.
The board can agree that subject to review and revision of the document on the...
On the conclusion.
Consistent with the discussion.
Yes.
That you said, okay, that's going to be changed too, okay. Yeah, I mean, it seems to be kind of the...
The chairman to sign.
That's really important one.
And if the board wishes, which it does, to have the applicant review the change language before the chairman signs, that certainly can be accounted.
Okay, Kelly, did you get that? All right, do, do, do I have a motion to do what George says?
No.
No?
Not what you want.
No, okay.
You would be adopting the amended finding statement in the form presented to you with revision of items as discussed at tonight's meeting, not consistent with that discussion, based on review and revision by committee, both of the chairman and Member Rogers. Circulation of those changes, those specific changes, the board members before the plan is signed, the chairman would then be authorized to sign the, uh, sign the finding statement. Then it can be filed and circulated in Seeker with attachments including the list of resources, which will include the list of consulting that we discussed. And there are some errata which I will discuss separately, but it'd be circulated with the errata sheet for the FEIS in a manner of a law board. Could that cuss it off?
So we'll only look at the errata sheet when this is being circulated?
So I have the document for you to look at tonight. Generally, it's consistent with the discussion we had. If you wish, you could review it and then authorize the committee to review it and incorporate it when it's consistent with the finding statement. That way, we don't have to belabor the language tonight. We will circulate the revised document as it would be incorporated before the finding statement is filed. So we'll send you the finding statement with the changes that Tim and Mike agreed upon. Send you the FEIS changes. And again, the difficulty is, the normal way this works is that you have all the documents, you have a public hearing on all the documents, and there's an FEIS which reflects and incorporates your responses to all of that. And that document is filed, circulated, and you proceed to your finding statement. This is, again, the anomalous situation where there is discussion and hearing about the FEIS. There is an opportunity for you to incorporate changes to the FEIS which reflect responses that you wish to make to that public discussion, as if you're dealing with the draft FEIS. And the vehicle for doing that is going to be the finding. Now, there's obviously some things, there are a few things in the finding statement as it was adopted where there's minor changes that should be corrected. There is one place where we have made certain assumptions which were not stable. I believe it's in everyone's interest to state the assumptions that we rely upon. There are several sections where it talks about the impact of the project and how it can be mitigated by a pilot. Did not clarify the nature of the pilot, what would have been required based on what we knew then to address the impacts, the cost impacts. And that would basically be a pilot which was, in essence, a deviated pilot based on the full number of units, based upon the full value. Deviated because even at that full value, the cost for each part that gets paid that payment is not reflecting the actual cost. Pilot has to be paid out in the same format as general taxes. School district gets sixty-one percent or so, the town gets twenty-three percent, the county gets fourteen or whatever's left over.
So is this something that still needs to be inserted in the findings?
It would be added to the findings. It's basically putting perspective on the statements in the FEIS. Not changing it, we're saying, "This is the assumptions that were made and let us come to that conclusion." And then we're explaining with respect to issues that we've resolved in the finding statement, how we came from the document base that was provided in the FEIS through the public hearing, through the additional information that was given by the town board, by the school board, by the assessor, the controller. The substance of the comments were made at the public hearing on the FEIS, comments were made to the IDA. They explain the nature of such things as the residential infill that would take place, the likelihood of additional impacts upon the school district beyond those contemplated time of the FEIS. We're rounding out the record and reflecting all of this information that you received over the last three or four months, as well as the applicant's proposed mitigation plan was presented to the town board, which would have paid out a total of three hundred eighty-eight thousand as the applicant's proposed mitigation for the impact of the project. And that was something which was not acceptable to the town until it was proposed. So we're explaining how we got from filing the FEIS to a finding statement, which is there's been stops along the way, information gathered, this information is considered by you in making your finding statement, which is, if you just look at the FEIS, it's not apparent.
So this would be an addendum to our-
That explains those specific-
Finding statement, which we haven't seen yet.
Your finding statement?
The finding statement, but not the addendum.
Right. The addendum attempts to clarify the things that we discussed tonight, which were-
Uh-huh. So back to the motion we need.
So what's that?
We need a motion to adopt in principle this finding statement with all of its-
Attachments.
Amendments and attachments, but we haven't seen the attachments yet.
Which we'll see.
We will see now.
It will be in a form acceptable to us. We'll look at the, we'll look at the attachments, we'll decide if it needs to be reviewed.
Okay. Are we going to do this on email or here and now?
We have-
We'll circulate it in a-
Twenty minutes.
Uh-huh. Do we want to do this? Well, let's do it. Let's take a look. Because it just seems like we have more and more things to try to do by email.
We don't do anything by email.
We can't, so.
No.
Let's take a look.
So essentially, in the finding statement, you made certain conclusions about pilot, whether or not it could mitigate the cost impacts on the town.
Wait, did we finish our motion? Are we in the middle of the motion?
No, we didn't.
Oh, okay.
Chairman educated.
We didn't.
Okay, so we're going to look through this.
I think we might want to look at this before we finish our motion.
Great, got it. We are in the motion.
So let's just have a moment of silence and actually look through this.
To give you the overview, the first page, and then two lines on the second page discusses the pilot, the nature of the pilot, and then reveal through the hearing process.
I'm sorry, I'm just working out a leg cramp.
On the second page, it talks about the rental infill issue that we discussed tonight. There may be some changes that Tim would like to make, which we could certainly pull through as committee. But I think we know what the general conclusion is with respect to rental and how it relates to your finding statement. So this is intended to provide the trail from FEIS to the finding statement. Starting page two on page three, three surfaces. Bottom of page three, we talked about the assessed value issue. Page four and page five talks about community character, and how this project will have an impact on community character, again, revealed in the course of the hearings and the testimony of individuals present in conference. And for a break, page five talks about the ground field sole remediation, and how the FEIS will be consistent, how the findings are consistent with the FEIS. Then on page seven and page eight are the, what I could term the errata items, where there are things that needed to be changed because they were not correct or quickly stated. Go through those quickly. The first point on page one fifty-two, there is a line which talks about the seventy thousand dollars in new property tax to the town, and this is a revised number based on the statement from the pilot. Number two was talking about the water and sewer facilities, the language in the FEIS that it would add additional capacity to accommodate existing shortages, water and wastewater discharge. There is no shortage, and that was unfortunate carryover of Congress for the draft FEIS. The FEIS does contain reference to restricting students as a condition of any pilot agreement that may be moot at this point, but was discussed in the FEIS. Page one eighty-two talks about, this is a discussion of that question of how many people would be coming, and so based on assumptions made in the applicant's book, to indicate that there is not, was not a study which was accepted by this. Then page one, there's a number of references to the FEIS, and in the FEIS to whether the project could offset the cost that would impose upon the town. And in that, we said, "A pilot could," but the assumption that had been made in the FEIS was that the pilot would be adjusted in terms of fee, the unit calculation, and most importantly, the allocation to the taxing jurisdictions, so that each taxing jurisdiction could receive a pilot payment equal to the cost that would be directly incurred as a result of the project. That was the assumption that we relied upon when we put that language into the FEIS, and it was based on the presumption that those things would be done. This is clarifying that and saying, "That's why we conclude it could cover the cost." In your finding statement, obviously, you make the conclusion, "It's not covering the cost for the town, it may not cover depending upon how you allocate the infill residential, it may not cover with the cost in school district." So this is making it clear that the two conclusions in the FEIS and the finding statement are not consistent. And that's, that logic is repeated in a number of places. The one thing I didn't have a chance to do today is check CGR's secondary job number, if I recall, in their report, and I think it's twenty-three?
Secondary, no.
The indirect jobs, great. There is a number, it's much smaller than the combined estimate of a hundred and fifty-seven.
Right.
Well, the interesting thing is that the FEIS was done before we got the Camoin Report.
No, not the, not the-
The DIS.
DEIS? What one was done on May fifteenth, night, twenty thirteen?
That would be the FIS.
Right.
No, no, the Camoin Report was May two thousand thirteen, the FEIS was October two thousand thirteen.
It was accepted.
The CGR report was October two thousand thirteen.
Yes.
Because I didn't find, when I was going through the FEIS, that a lot of the information in the CGR report was in there, unless there's another version that I didn't have. I had the May fifteenth, twenty thirteen FEIS.
May fifteenth was the draft document submitted by the applicant. There was then a period of time when we were working on-
Oh, so I've been looking at the wrong darn thing, and no wonder I'm finding things that don't fit.
Changed.
Heck. All right.
The FEIS that was accepted and circulated is dated May, October twenty-sixth, I think, twentieth. I'll read this document.
That was a waste of time.
Well, now you can see how much things have changed.
On the other hand, you don't have to listen to all my comments. October.
I know you have. I know you would have, actually, because we did talk about it.
Yeah.
Stayed at October twenty.
I have a question about line forty-eight. The FEIS noticed that available data indicated that there were one thousand three hundred and fifty-six rental housing units in the town and village. So, uh-huh, thirteen hundred rental housing units, how many bedrooms is that?
It's not clear. It's sensitive status, I'll cite it. It's one of the problems with the available information, is we can't make a linear translation from bedrooms at our point to- from bedrooms apart point to bedrooms.
Maybe you could add available data from the 2010 census so that that kind of explains where that one comes from.
George, how does this fit into, where is this going to be put in the document?
It should be a supplement to the findings. The finding statement will be filed in the same places and circulated to the same agencies as the FEIS was.
So it says at the top FEIS supplement.
Yes. If there is an explanation.
And the finding is part of the FEIS.
Yes. Well, it's not part.
It's just findings. Is this a supplement to the findings or to the FEIS?
This is a supplement to the FEIS.
Okay.
To be added to explain how the FEIS was converted into the findings.
Aha, okay, got it.
So going on the rental infill section right on line 50, didn't we just spend the first 45 minutes talking about this whole thing and came up with a different conclusion than what's stated between lines 50 and 59?
Yeah, but if you go 60 to 66, that's where it changes.
50 to 59 is what the FEIS said. You don't have information in perspective which clarifies it was.
So we can include, we can include exactly what we had been discussing to, and what we agreed we would insert in the findings statement. That's why I think it's important to have some sort of quantitative assessment.
So if you work out a quantitative assessment, that would be inserted in this as well as the findings?
Yes.
Aren't we ready then to accept the changes that we've discussed, the actions upon the changes that haven't been fully agreed on yet, and the FEIS supplement with its list of errata and authorizing the chairman, when he's back, to accept?
Or the chairwoman if it's ready.
What?
Or the chairwoman if it's ready.
If it's ready, sure, but I'm, I'm just a stand-in here when we do have the wording that has been circulated to the board as we have discussed.
Which are minor clarifications in nature, not substantive, which are substantive changes would require me to, yes.
Okay, which are of clarificatory nature and not substantive changes, and we all understand this. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
And a second? Thank you, Legusta. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, good. Then we will look forward to getting the revisions that we've discussed and if anybody has any problems with them, we'll figure out what to do at the time.
So the next matter on the agenda is the draft decision, which was prepared, which recites the record so far, the, and the finding statement.
And this is, this is the one, has this been revised?
No.
Free page one. Okay. And since there is nothing substantive in what we have discussed tonight, it should not affect the, anything in this draft resolution and record of decision. So, and we've all read it.
And just to take you through the general, we'll agree to. We have page one, which is essentially the history of the application secret process that was followed. And page two, we're discussing the planning board's role as lead agency with respect to the FEIS, the common situation. Steve, on the FEIS, the consideration that you made in viewing the FEIS and the record that was compiled, we did make reference to the impact analysis that you performed, the draft finding statement on April 7th, which was reviewed and adopted, and then the cemented finding statement, which considers the action mistaken by the IDA. Granted, category five pilot, your finding statement concludes that the category five pilot would have significant adverse impacts upon the school district and the town, and that those impacts would translate into environmental impacts considered under secret of the community character and population distribution. I think there is an adequate record in the hearing record that you've heard, that the IDA heard, which you have incorporated by notice in your record of the application review or the D I S review, which is part of your findings. And that based on the conclusions you've reached in the findings, because of the impacts that the project is creating, not the economic impact, but the impact of fiscal impact on community services or to the character of the school district and the police department that would change the character of the community, that you have essentially reached the conclusion that the project should be denied and that denial is based on secret grounds. So you're not looking at this project, you're not saying that based on the site plan, you deny it under the town's site plan regulations, as many criteria. You have not considered that, you have not taken action on the subject. But based on the nature of the impacts disclosed in the environmental review process, you have made a determination based so forth in your findings that the project cannot be approved, which was granted, therefore you can conclude the actions that are adopted in the resolution denying the way it was proposed based on post secret grounds. This resolution.
So it comes down to therefore upon motion of member blank and seconded by member blank, would somebody like to be the first member?
To make the motion.
And seconded by? I'll second it, why not? And the affirmative vote of how many members?
Aye.
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 Five, small five. And a negative vote of zero members.
No exceptions to that.
Then be it resolved that the planning board of the town of New Paltz, upon review of the draft secret finder statements adopted by the planning board on April 7th, 2014, and now in final form hereby accepts the conformed finding statement for filing and circulation with the.
Well, you've already taken that action.
Updated things. You've taken care of that.
So this section of the resolution.
And now in final form hereby for filing and circulation, authorizes the chairman to sign the finding statement and directs the secretary to file and circulate it in accordance with the requirements of 6 NYCRR 617.12. Therefore, upon motion of member somebody and seconded by member somebody in the affirmative vote, be it further resolved that the planning board adopts this resolution denying site plan approval for the aforementioned application for the reasons set forth in section K of the secret finding statement, which reasons are incorporated herein as if set forth in full in this resolution.
So I'll make the motion.
Okay. And seconded.
I'll second it.
Huh? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And anyone opposed? Zero. And today is May 12th. So there we are. And it's here for Mike to sign.
He changed, didn't he?
But I, I think it, should it be signed now or?
No, I'll give you a revised version with the.
Yeah. And it would be probably more appropriate for Mike to sign it, but if he's not back, that's like it.
Should probably ensure it gets done.
Okay. Good. Now I have one little question, and that is, this is the end of our secret process. However, you see IDA granted a pilot and we weren't done. Does that matter? How do those cases that were brought up apply to this?
Well, the case that was brought up by David, a specific case from, from IDA versus somebody.
Yeah.
The action that happened there was taken without any secret action on the part of the lead agency whatsoever.
Uh huh.
It was clearly a violation. This is an instance where the FEIS was filed and circulated, circulated with notice of a hearing. The IDA did wait till a hearing. They provided a copy of their hearing record to you, and then based on the April 7th adoption of the resolution, they took action.
Uh huh.
I believe the IDA would characterize that as following the secret procedure. Lead agency, they said they would wait till the lead agency had taken, made its findings. And the action that you took on April 7th was the adoption of the findings statement. It wasn't fully revised or performed, but the changes that were made were essentially material going in ways, having the I S and so on. So it will take a wiser man than me to figure out if that was fully proper procedure or not. I believe they, I believe the IDA will tell you the ad discussion basis to act, whether I would agree. Of course, you have to tell me your findings.
Okay, well, well, they did what they did and we did what we did.
And essentially by, by taking the action, they did clarify the circumstances.
Yes.
Your, your resolution was adopted and the reason you had to amend it tonight said if the IDA acted does one or three things, these were, you analyzed those things, but they were analyzed in a hypothetical. At that time, you didn't know if they would actually determine a bed as a simple bedroom or unit. You didn't know what the amount would be, you didn't know whether it would be a deviated pilot. Now you know all those things, you made an amended finding statement, which is provided for in secret. Project changes, circumstances change, you can amend your findings and come to, you can come to a different conclusion based on the change, or you can come to, well, you came to a different conclusion.
So can the IDA amend its findings too?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you all.
Make a motion.
Yeah, is there anything else that's, I don't think there is.
I don't.
So, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
I leave.
Just as a point of information, the board does have that draft solar ordinance to consider?
Oh.
Which if the members have to review, perhaps could be scheduled for discussion in upcoming weeks.
Which one is this?
Would you ask solar ordinance that would establish, make provision for solar generation facilities, large scale farms? It was distributed at the.
A while ago now. It was like a month ago, maybe.
Maybe even at March. It was authorized at the February 26th.
Isn't that something that would just get put on the agenda one time or another?
Well, it would best be put on the agenda if you have a chance to review it. So the board has, recovers its recognition.
Okay.
Well, there's a, there's a associated document that we can review?
Yeah.
I, I don't remember.
It got, I think it got distributed probably March, George. It was distributed a while ago and it was based on, you put a memo out, it was based on some new legislation or some grant funding that, right? And didn't you kind of talk about the funding that, is it you that put the grant, the memo out about the funding that came to authorizing you to do that?
There is, there is the EV solar thing, which was also, it's been adopted by the town, but this is.
Oh, this was a different one. Okay, then that's, okay, I don't remember seeing this then either. That's what I'm thinking of.
Maybe, maybe this should be recirculated again. I never even looked at it.
I don't remember seeing that. I thought we did that EV.
Kelly, could you, could you recirculate what George is discussing, this? You know what he's speaking about? Okay. I don't have any idea.
Okay, so motion to adjourn?
Made the motion.
Second. Legusta? All in favor?
Aye.